Good evening. I will now call the April 8th, 2025 Bermuda Run Town Council Meeting to order. As a reminder, everyone, please silence your phones. Do you want to recognize we have a quorum? We have all council present. If you're able, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is the intent of the town council to make solemn the proceedings of this meeting and the business brought before the governing board to offer the opportunity for a reflective moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Number four topic, excuse me, Town of Bermuda Run Code of Ethics. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 16886 and 160D109, in the Town of Bermuda Run Code of Ethics policy adopted November 9th, 2010, and further endorsed on August 9th, 2022, I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which will come before the town council for a vote at this meeting tonight. If so, please speak up and let the council know at this time before the agenda is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Item number five, adoption of the agenda. Council's had an opportunity to review the agenda. Are there any revisions or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Tedder?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ernst. Those with approval, show of hands. Five oh, thank you, council. Number six, approval of the March 11th, 2025 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Council's had an opportunity to review the minutes. Any revisions or do I have a motion?
Move that be approved.
A second.
Motion by Guthrie, second. By Schaefer. Council show of hands of approval. Five oh. Thank you, council. Agenda item number seven. So as I mentioned in our last month's council meeting, we now have a new community officer, Deputy Josh Whitlock from the Davie County Sheriff's Office. I would like to welcome him to the town. And I spoke to him and asked him if he would come tonight and take just a couple of minutes and introduce himself, share a little information with the town. So with that, Deputy Whitlock, please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Josh Whitlock. I've been in law enforcement for close to a decade on and off. I worked for Ireda County Sheriff's Office and now for Davie County Sheriff's Office. I try to be a resource, so if you need anything, please feel free to reach out. If I don't get back to you, I'm a little younger age, so just shoot me a text message and I'll try to follow up with you. Does anybody have any questions for me, any concerns?
Give a little bit of information on your background. I know you live in Statesville, right?
I do. I'm an Ireda County resident. I live in Statesville. I've got three kids, two that are six and one that's about to be a year old this weekend. So full house. Yeah, I was in the military. I was a combat engineer for the Army National Guard and now transitioning into the reserves. So some weekends I'm a little occupied, but again, I try to make myself available for everyone and then just do what I can for them, so.
Any questions for Deputy Whitlock? Thank you for your service.
Welcome to have me.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Welcome to the team.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Item number eight, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have anyone that signed up.
All right. As we try to do in almost all of our meetings, we invite, I invite various agencies or organizations, even some businesses to come and speak. And tonight, we're honored to again have Davie County Senior Services. Join us tonight, we have Mr. Brent Harp and Michelle Ellis from Davie County Senior Services. So last month, I had the opportunity to officially open the 2025 Senior Games at RISE. It was good timing to go ahead and invite Senior Services to come here. Just remind our audience that we do not take questions from the audience, but council's certainly welcome to take questions. But with that, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for your invite tonight, council. Big shout out to Mr. Brennan for all his support with Senior Services. He's been an advocate since day one, walking into the door. I've been the director for about three months now. And I'll let Michelle introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Michelle Ellis. I have been with Senior Services for, get ready to celebrate my four-year anniversary as Assistant Director. So thanks again for having us tonight.
Welcome.
All right, just show of hands in the room. Who knows about all the programs that we have for seniors in Davie County? All right, all right, okay. All right, so we're here to talk to you guys a little bit about that tonight. So our programs, you have to be 55 and older to participate. Senior Games through Davie County is a little bit different. We'll talk about that later on. You actually don't have to be 50 for Senior Games. Our mission for Senior Services is to enrich the lives of seniors in our community by fellowship, fun, and learning through activities that enrich their lives. I like to tell people that we're a lot more than just bingo. So we have a lot of programs going on throughout the day. We usually on a given day, we have five or six programs minimum. As you can tell, we have a card club. We do a lot for veterans in Davie County. That's very important to us. And then also at the Barak, we do a lot of fitness classes. This one right here is chair yoga. And we're very, very proud to be an NC Senior of Excellency. There's not a whole lot of those in the state of North Carolina, and we're very, very proud of that. That basically means that we hit a different array of, a variety of different classes and we got something for everybody. Just a little bit more, we have a lot of educational seminars, social events such as Valentine's Day Party, Christmas Party, Halloween Party. We have an art club. We have a woodworking club, a lot of different crafts. We have a computer class with Tech Tuesday every Tuesday that helps seniors be aware of fraud, online scams, all types of stuff like that. We have a book club. We have a chorus of about 30 people that actually perform at most of our social events. We have different community events. We have a theater club that goes within two hours of Davie County to different theaters. And then we do provide a lot of field trips, day trips, museums. We go to different restaurants, all types of fun stuff. And then the last two on there, really proud of, we have a cancer support group and a Parkinson Support Group. And then we also nutrition services, we provide on a given day, probably about 230 meals to seniors of Davie County. We have 50 to 60 that come to our center that are congregate meals. And then one of my favorite things about my job, we do Meals on Wheels. We have about 180 participants that are in Davie County that get Meals on Wheels. We'll talk about that a little bit later. Our two facilities, we're right beside Miller's, if you don't know where we are. We're on Maroni Street. This is our facility that we're really proud of. We're open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. All right, just a couple pictures we got here. This is on one of our field trips. We usually have about 15 to 20 people participate in our field trips, our flower club. And this is a really cool picture. This was actually on Senior Elderly Abuse Awareness Day. We asked all of our participants to wear purple and took this group picture. We have a big cafeteria at our facility that seats around 200 people. This is just some more holiday fun that we had. And every Veterans Day, we have a Veterans Day Lunch and Dinner to show appreciation for all the veterans in Davie County. Fun fact, we work with Megan Tomlin on this, and you do not have to be a senior to participate in this event. Any veteran is welcome. And we have our prom, we do a senior prom. Actually, this event is coming up this Friday at Barak, twice interested, six to eight. So that's just another program that we have. And then also, we also supervise the Barak. So most of our health and wellness programs are out of the Barak, yoga, zumba. We have many, many different activities throughout the week. And that Barak's hours are a little longer than ours. It's actually eight to eight Monday through Thursday. We do open gyms, so anyone older than 50, you have to be 55 to get in the door at the Barak. Anyone 55 and up can come participate in basketball, walking, we have a walking club. We have a little gym, we have a fitness room that probably 50% of the people that walk through the door use at the Barak. It's one of our most popular programs. We have line dancing, we have yoga, chair yoga, zumba, pickleball, of course, taking over the world. We have a bowling, we have a bowling league. And then we also have Senior Games, which we'll touch base on a little bit. But yeah, so Senior Games, like I said earlier, you only have to be 50 to participate in this. Each county in North Carolina offers this. We have a very, very, very popular Senior Games program. We have over 200 people that participate, which is pretty good. Just as a reverence, Forsyth County has about 400, so we're doing pretty good. We offer basketball, bocce, golf, bowling, pickleball, shuffleboard, cornhole. And then if sports aren't your thing, we also have the Silver Arts, which is designed for visual, literary, and performing arts, 50 and older. So we have knitting, crocheting, painting, quilting, woodwork, pottery. We have a lot of different things with Silver Arts. This is just some pictures of activities at the Barak. This is our stretching class. And these are some pictures from Senior Games. You guys might know some of the people on there. Shuffleboard's actually at Bermuda Run. And this is at bocce at the high school, and then we do our track event at the high school as well. And this is a team event, I believe that's horseshoes? Bocce? And like I said earlier, all our activities are open to 55 and up. The only thing that, our nutrition is actually 60 and up. That's one of our caveats, you have to be 60 to get a meal. All of our memberships are free. You can either come to the Barak or our main campus beside Miller's and get a membership for free.
In addition to being the Assistant Director at Senior Services, I'm also the SHIP Coordinator for our county. SHIP stands for Seniors Health Insurance Information Program. And sometimes this is the first time we get older adults coming in our door. They don't, they're not old enough to come when they're 55, but when they turn 65, they know that they, you know, could use a little guidance as far as their options with Medicare. So that is a big component of my job. Some of those, you know, meetings can last two to three hours because it's an important decision. You want to make the right one when you're getting ready to turn 65. So that is a service that we offer, and we also have a team of volunteers that go through a rigorous training and that they are certified as SHIP counselors as well. So keep us in mind if you need some guidance. We don't endorse or, you know, push a certain company. We're unbiased. We just help educate folks on their Medicare options. So that is a big component of my job and a valuable service through Senior Services. It's actually through the North Carolina Department of Insurance. I think I mentioned that we have, we have about four trained volunteers right now. And we can, you know, some folks are eligible for Medicare that are under 65 because they're eligible due to a disability. So we also counsel those folks if they reach out to us. And those services are available by appointment, but of course, you can have somebody drop in. A lot of times then I'll schedule an appointment, or if I have time, I'll go ahead and work them in. So that is our SHIP program. We just wrapped up our tax aid program just last week. Last Friday was the last appointment that we scheduled. Of course, you know, the tax deadline is April 15th, but we coordinate with a group of volunteers through AARP to provide tax aid services for actually people of all ages, not just seniors. So you can actually be under 55 and receive the tax aid service. So that is an invaluable service. The lady that was the coordinator, this was her last year. She was the coordinator for 21 years, and she has stepped down and wants to just enjoy taxes next year without the pressure of, you know, filling out those taxes. So we are coordinating with her regional person to get some money in place for next year. We have a period of time where you can just walk in for those tax preparation services or you can make an appointment. And again, it's free of charge, so that's always nice to get your taxes done for free. We have two social workers on staff, and one of our social workers, Kelly Sloan, her primary job is to coordinate the Family Caregiver Support Program. This program provides respite for those that are caring for a loved one with dementia or Alzheimer's. Invaluable service, we expend all our money every year, and we actually usually dip into some of our fundraising and other grants to provide this service. It also provides some nutritional supplements, like Ensure, if the person needs it, and some incontinence supplies. So it's a grant that we never, ever have a hard time spending. I actually had somebody come in today and he just said, I'm watching, you know, I'm caring for my wife, but I have somebody from my church that comes and watches my wife two hours during the week, and that's just not enough. I need a little bit more of a break. So I put him in contact with Kelly, and I'm sure she's gonna, you know, give him what he needs to. Caregiving is a very challenging, you know, task, so we're here to support those folks when they, when they need it. Works through a voucher program. We work with several local home health agencies to provide this service. They have, they provide the aids and then bill us, and we pay them through the grants that we have. Kelly also coordinates our robotic therapy pets. These are just fantastic, you know, for someone that has dementia, it's a way to kind of calm them down. They use, they like the cats or the dogs. I think actually Kelly had a story about a lady, I think her pet was at her funeral. You know, she, she just had this bond with this robotic pet, and the family, you know, just wanted to honor their mom's wishes. And then we do have some GPS trackers available for those that, you know, wander. And then we have activity kits that are available for folks with Alzheimer's and dementia. Sometimes fidget, it helps to calm them down to use these activity kits that we have available. So Brent mentioned our congregate lunch program where we have folks coming in daily, Monday through Friday, for a hot meal. You don't have, it's free of charge if you fill out a little bit of paperwork. You just have to be 60 and older for this program. We have some restrictions with our funding, so that is our congregate lunch program. We have a program like this, either an activity or a speaker. They had someone about gardening, I think they came in today. They do a program at 10:00 and then they eat at 11:00. And we have a hot meal provided every day or on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, they can choose to get a salad or a sub instead of a hot meal for a little variety. And then, of course, probably our most highest profile program is Meals on Wheels. Most people are familiar with that. That is the, I think that's the Bermuda Run Garden Club there, yes, who provides flowers for us on a quarterly basis for the folks on Meals on Wheels. It always smells so great when we can tell when the garden club has come by and brought their pre-flowers for our participants. And that's just a couple of our volunteers that were delivering. So again, that was a 60 and older program. Currently have nine routes, but we are getting full on a couple of routes. We've been debating on, do we start another route? But, you know, it fluctuates because people, they go in the hospital or they come off the program, and we're just kind of, kind of filling it out because we had never had a waiting list for Meals on Wheels, and we don't want to start having a waiting list. So we've been able to serve everyone that needs a meal and qualifies for one. Couldn't do it without our volunteers, they're our drivers. They do pass, have to pass a background check, but we could not have this service if it weren't for our volunteer drivers.
Yeah, I want to bounce off that a little bit. So Meals on Wheels, there's a, there's a pretty big preconceived notion about Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels is for anyone, any type of income level. It is for individuals that are seniors that are, that cannot physically get out of their house. So I just always like to say that because we have about 180 people on our Meals on Wheels client list. So that's a lot of people that we help on a day-to-day basis.
And the meal is really not what is the most important, is that visit. You know, if they're, they're homebound, they're not getting it. The food's a bonus, the meal, the visit's really what, what is most important. We have a farmer's market voucher program that we work with the state. This is going to be our fourth season this summer. Last year, they issued $50 worth of vouchers for the folks that qualified. This is an income-based program, but folks receive those $50, this is their $5 vouchers, $50 worth to be redeemed at the Mocksville Farmer's Market and the Advance. Those two markets are approved, and the state folks work with the coordinators of those markets. It's been very popular. We, we offer two distribution days for the vouchers, and we, we get rid of them. We actually requested more from the state last year, and we're able to get some more and distribute those. So folks really like being able to get those fresh fruits and vegetables. It's kind of restricted. You can only do fruits, vegetables, honey, and cut herbs, I think, so. So that's been popular. So we're just waiting, we're assuming, we're hoping it's going to be at least $50 again this year, but the state has not given us the final numbers on that just yet. But again, 60 and older, and it is based on income for this program, the farmer's market vouchers. So of course, if you have any questions about Senior Services, you know, we are trying to offer information and referral services. And then we kind of go a step further with our social worker, again, Kelly Sloan. She offers options counseling, so it's a little more involved, kind of like case management. If you call and like you've got a loved one that's maybe transitioning from not being independent, they need to go to a facility or need, you know, just another level of care. Kelly works with those folks to just give them their options so people don't feel trapped or don't know where to turn. So that's an invaluable service. All of our staff can, you know, of course, give information and referral. We have a nice resource guide, and it's available online through our website. You can tap into it online, but we have the actual paper books if someone wants a resource guide. So it's not just local, it's got social security, national, and regional numbers in there as well. So if you don't know where to turn when it's dealing with a senior, just give us a call. And if we don't know the answer, we can usually reach out to someone who does. So that was just a little bit more details about what I was mentioning about just kind of looking at those options and identifying someone's needs and kind of assisting them for a solution. We also contract out an in-home aid service. It's similar to the caregiver that we were talking about earlier. We contract with a, you know, home health agency in High Point, and they provide aids in the home for folks that need personal care, help with a bath, some light meal prep, things like that. It's been a little bit of a challenging program because staffing, and that's nothing, you know, that we can do. It's the agency, you know, it's just, it's an issue everywhere. There's, there's not enough staff for all types of businesses, and in-home aid has really, you know, hit hard, I think, after, during and after COVID. But we are spending that money. We don't have any, anyone on a waiting list now, so we're able to serve all of those that have requested this service, and we're going to hope to provide it again next year. Volunteers, like we said, critical to our Meals on Wheels program, but then we also have the SHIP volunteers with the Medicare counseling, the tax aid volunteers. That's how we're able to provide that service for free because they are volunteers. We don't have to pay them to do that. We have folks that help in the kitchen, serving those lunch meals. We have, most of our class instructors are volunteers. We pay a few of them, but we couldn't have the variety of classes that we offer without those volunteer instructors because that helps save us money because we don't have to pay them to do that, and they just enjoy doing it, which is, is great. We're coordinating with the high school, have some student volunteers that are coming in weekly to help us out with various tasks, so we, we coordinate with them as well. And that's just kind of highlights everything we've mentioned, some of our most popular programs and services. Any questions for us?
Yeah, how many volunteers do you have in your?
I just did a report for just last month, and I think we had 187 just for the month of, of, was that March? Yeah, so I just looked at that today, actually.
And employees?
Employees, we have.
Six, six full-timers and about six part-timers.
You do a lot with a small staff.
Those volunteers help to stretch those dollars and that, you know, we can, we usually do it at our annual report. The value of those volunteer hours is, is worth a lot.
Yes, first of all, thank you so much for everything you do. I don't know anybody who hasn't been touched and reached out to everything you do. Just building on Councilwoman Christie's, Councilperson Christie's question a little bit, your business model. I was reading, you're 40 years old, is that right, last October, which is pretty significant for any organization? And your funding comes from grants, cost sharing, and donations, and donations are tax deductible. I was just wondering just a little bit more about your business model, I mean, in terms of with six staff, but, but how do you make all this work? And is it just a little bit more about the financial model?
Of course, the county finances as well. You know, we spend our grant money first and then the county supplements a lot of our salaries and programs.
Yeah, so we're under Mr. Brian Barnett, he's our county manager, and then we're under Health and Human Services. So we abide by their guidelines, and there's five different departments under Health and Human Services, Environmental Health, Senior Services, Adult Protective Services, Child Protective Services, and I'm missing something.
Domestic violence.
Domestic violence. Thank you, Miss.
Those, what portion is federal granting? That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, I would have to do the math. I don't, I'm not sure off the top of my head. Most of our block grant, like the Meals on Wheels, the nutrition program, the in-home aid program, the information and case assistance, all those have some federal funds tied to them, and the family caregiver as well, yeah.
I want to say probably about half, if I take a guess.
It's probably, yeah.
I am, I'm blown away by the, by the wide array of services you provide, so thank you for that.
Oh, yeah. Before I ever worked for Senior Services, I worked for older housing, and yeah, I was like, we have a great senior center, y'all need to go.
My question is, if, if I'm a senior person, one of these days when I'm a senior.
When you get more mature. When you get more mature, baby.
If I'm just out in the county, how do I learn of all these services? What's the, what's the, how do, how do people find out about all these services you provide?
This is our quarterly newsletter, which is like a booklet. We send it out for the, every three months. And then, of course, we're online, and you, when you turn 55, we send out either a, actually this year, turning out, sending out a postcard saying, you know, given our link for the online newsletter, so you can access it and, you know, save some paper, but.
Word of mouth? Word of mouth is a big one for us.
Especially SHIP, I think I get a lot of folks from word of mouth.
Yeah, and we, we have a very active Facebook. We do a couple of different expos throughout the year, too. We do a health and fitness expo. We do an expo for seniors, it's kind of like a job fair a couple of times a year. So we do, I feel like we do a really good job marketing our programs. Social media is really our biggest one.
Do we have to register to receive your newsletter?
You don't have to. You should be getting, if you, you should have gotten, started getting them if you lived here when you were 55. But if you don't, you can certainly give us a call, and we can hook you up with one in the mail or.
There's a stack in the mail.
Yeah, we brought a bunch.
We did, but yeah, you can definitely add it to our mailing list or do it online, whatever, whichever you prefer. Sometimes I like to flip through the actual book.
So it sounds like it's really, almost all the services you provide are free to the participants.
We have very few, we have a few craft classes we have to charge for the supplies, but yes, we're very proud to have a programming that does not cost the senior citizen.
Well, that's a minor miracle in my opinion.
It is, and a lot, a lot of senior centers do not do that.
No, some just charge membership.
Two dollars every time you come in the door. We also charge for field trips, of course.
Do you have, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, this is fascinating. Do you have cooperative-type programs with, with other organizations such as RISE or other facilities within the county that you can take advantage of and that you can get some support from?
We do. RISE is one of our biggest supporters. We actually, like Mayor Brennan said, we actually had our, our opening ceremonies for Senior Games at RISE. We partner with a lot of different agencies. We partner with the Recreation and Parks a lot for different intergenerational activities. What else?
We had the Special Olympics coordination at RISE. We did a bocce tournament there at RISE as well. We do have the shuffleboard event at Bermuda Village.
Davie High School is another big supporter of us. They sent us a lot of volunteers.
The Davie County Library. We partner with them for our Craft Noon and Book Club. So yeah, lots of collaborations for sure.
Awesome.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thanks for your question.
So I've, I've got the privilege of serving on the Senior Services Advisory Council. Commissioner Finney's back here in the, in the audience as part of that as well. I will just say, remember the numbers, six full-time, six part-time. It is incredible the amount of energy and effort and passion that your organization puts across our entire county. And thank you to all the volunteers. Without them, many of these things can't happen. But I encourage you, open that book and flip through the many pages. You will be blown away by the sheer volume of activity. So whether you want to participate in activities, or you want to volunteer, or you want to do both, I strongly encourage you, reach out, go to Facebook, consume some of that information. Incredible group of volunteers, incredible group of workers, none of which would happen if this, if Senior Services wasn't able to pull all that energy together. Been very blessed to be. Been very blessed to be a very small part of just participating. And every time you go in that building, there's something going on. There's activities happening. Any of you who know Carrie Miller, Ball of Energy runs the entire Davie Senior Games. She's just an example of all of the folks that are part of that organization. And it starts with the leadership. So just kudos to you and all that you do. Hopefully, folks can either participate in the events or even better, volunteer and help out Meals on Wheels and any of those activities in a very small way. A hundred-plus volunteers, it doesn't happen without all that work. So thank you again.
May I ask one more quick question? This is just, what would you consider to be your most pressing need right now? If you had to, we had to pin you down.
From a volunteer standpoint, money. Okay, we'll make sure.
We're still on with volunteers, but we've been marketing that.
From a volunteer, from a volunteer standpoint, Meals on Wheels or some other part of your, part of your services?
Tax aid, too. Tax aid now because we've had someone step down tax aid.
Well, I can't help you.
Still Meals on Wheels.
Lord almighty, I couldn't help you.
If anyone knows any retired CPAs, feel free to send them my way.
And especially with summer coming on, our volunteers like to go on vacation, too. So, you know, we do need, you don't have to commit to every Wednesday or, you know, just be a fill-in. And we could call you and say, oh, we've got this route open. Because, you know, they get sick or they have surgery or, you know, most of our volunteers are older adults, too, because they're the ones that are out, not working anymore. So that's still probably our greatest volunteer need, I think.
I would also say instructors for different classes. We are, we try to offer a variety of different things. We're actually starting a taché class and a shag class very soon. And we actually had our first taché class yesterday. We had 25 people. So it's just tricky whenever, you know, that's volunteer and they go on vacation. We need a backup instructor sometimes. And a lot of the times, we just, we talk our seniors into it and, you know, they're incredible leaders and they just need a little bit of confidence.
And no one's asking people to volunteer for eight hours a day, five days a week. It just starts small, something that you're passionate about. Come there one time, spend a little time. It might pull you in and you might find that this is, this is part of your calling to do that. So I encourage anyone, whatever your passion is, whether you want to participate or whether you want to volunteer and lead, please do so. There's so much opportunity in this county and so much appreciate Senior Services and all that you do. Any other questions? Thank you again for all that you do and coming tonight. Thank you.
Just everyone, I have left our newsletter back here. It's a peak newsletter.
Great. Thank you, Brett. All right. Item number 10, Proposed Action Items. Resolution R 2025-004 Directed Projects Grant. Meadwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you and I, it's a resolution to accept funds in the amount of $2,216,250 as part of a directed projects grant from the North Carolina Department of Environment Quality. This was part of the 2023 Appropriations Act in session law 2023-134 to help the town assist in the modernization of its wastewater distribution system. So as most of council members know, Senator Jarvis was instrumental in giving these, getting these funds for the town. So this is the start of that process to accept these funds so that we can start that, start that project, so.
And I'll go ahead and answer the question that I asked of Andrew. I thought for a moment when I saw the amount that perhaps there was, there was some money, money being siphoned off by our town manager. I distinctly remember that number being 2.25 million coming from Mr. Jarvis, Senator Jarvis. But you want to give an explanation of that?
Yeah, so also, as part of that session law, there was a provision. And as you can imagine, the Department of Environmental Quality, with all these project, directed project grants, there was a provision that they, that the department was able to keep a small percentage of those grants to help offset the amount of time and effort that they go through in administering these. So that's the difference there.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Meadwell?
Just out of ignorance, these funds, are they earmarked for a specific project that has been identified?
They are, they are. They are specifically for the wastewater system in Bermuda Run, which is primarily in, mostly in Bermuda Run East. So that is the only area that the sewer system, that the town of Bermuda Run owns and maintains.
Okay. So this, what was recently completed there, that's, that's not being funded by this? That's some other source?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on where that money was going.
But part of that, the purpose for that grant ultimately, and we've talked about this over the years, is the goal is for the town to get out of the wastewater business and ultimately turning that over to the county. And that's why the journey from the Uniper pump stations, the removal of the existing wastewater treatment plant, the work that's underway now with the asset inventory assessment, all of this is that journey toward getting us ultimately out of that business. This is a significant amount of money that will allow us to make that sort of next step in that process, ultimately to shore up what we have in our current systems to be able to eventually turn that over to the county in, in, in good shape.
That's right.
Is there any kind of timeline on that?
Yeah, so there's a, there is a project, and it's included in some of those documents. We have certain key dates that we have to meet. But, you know, this was all part of the, our project summary outline that we submitted to DEQ in which it meets those requirements, so.
Probably one more thing to add is some grants come to the town and the funds actually come directly to the town. Like we have for our Quality of Life funding from Representative Howard, that was funds that came to the town. In this case, it's the town will need to spend the money and basically draw back that money through this 2.16 amount of money.
Right.
There's no other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
Motion by Nelson, second by Schaefer. Show of hands for approval. Five-oh. Thank you, counsel. Item 11, Town Manager Report Comments.
Just, just a few comments, Mr. Mayor and counsel. We try to keep you abreast of what's going on with the paving work there on US Highway 158. This is, just to be clear, this is a NC DOT resurfacing project. This, this project was let, I think, two years ago. If you recall, last summer, they were, DOT contractors were working on 158 going out of Bermuda Run toward Baltimore Road. So they started this end of the project at the bridge coming forward. They did not let the town know that they were going to be doing this work. We found out, like most of you, when we seen the equipment being unloaded, so. So it is my understanding that paving was supposed to start last night at the roundabout. But just to reiterate, this, this schedule is up to that contractor that won, that drew NC DOT. The town has really no influence on driving or directing this. So outside of this.
Are they starting tonight?
Again, I do not know, so.
It said April 8.
Yeah, yeah. So, so hopefully, the paving will go a little bit more smoother, smoother than the milling went. But anyway, so it should be throughout this rest of the week with paving. But if they don't start, I'll get a further update and let you know, so.
Did they haul the milling off or were you using the Blue Heron Trail?
I have no idea. No idea. No idea. So the other things, there's, just kind of keep you abreast, there, there are several Senate bills and House bills that have been introduced in this legislative session. Those that have great impacts on local governments and your ability to decide on land use related issues. So we're keeping an eye on those, just to kind of track those. But it, it seems like, you know, the legislative session is not that old and there are a lot of bills out there. So it'll be a very busy, short session this year. So we'll try to keep you abreast on a lot of this work. The other thing is the planning board will meet this month. There is a planned text amendment. And this is dealing with modifying or changing those duties for the Board of Adjustment. So planning board will hear that. And then they'll probably be on your agendas coming up in May and then in June for adoption, if you so choose to call for the public hearing. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Do we want to mention also the start time for our April 22?
Yes.
Council agenda meeting?
Yes. I think we agreed that we would, we're, we're going to push that start date, start time to 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, right.
Just so that we can kind of coordinate this seamlessly to move to the flag raising ceremony at 11:30. So, so we'll send out that notice and to let folks know that we've moved that time to 10 o'clock.
So anyone who's plans to attend the agenda meeting on April 22, it's normally at nine, it will start at 10. That's really the message. Look for more documentation around that.
And the flag was to be 11:30?
Right, right. So I'll speak to that in just a second here. So, so the Blue Heron Trail Phase 2 was open. We had a ribbon cutting. So I want to thank everyone who joined us for that. We had quite a crowd on that, that cold windy day. So we, we know how to time these weather things perfectly, don't we? It, it was, it was great to have all the people there. As I said before, and I said in the ribbon cutting itself, many of the things that this council and the leadership of this town do oftentimes doesn't come to fruition until future years, future councils, much like Blue Heron Trail. Many of us up here were not part of the original adoption of the Blue Heron Trail's decision, but, but were able to participate in the Phase 1 ribbon cutting. Now this is the Phase 2, and though this is part of our journey, part of our, our role that we play is to lay the vision, listen to what we heard from people in our comprehensive plan, map those plans, and then ultimately, someone someday will be cutting a ribbon, celebrating that event. So I just also wanted to thank, again, Sally McGuire and Ken Bingham from Hillsdale Group, as well as Scott Wallaston from NC Fusion. Their, their partnership and their generosity helped make that Phase 2 opening of our pedestrian bridge happen. Without them, we'd still be talking about Phase 2. So it just exemplifies the public and private partnerships that can happen. And when they do, I think it's a wonderful demonstration of how a town and businesses can work together. As noted just moments ago, April 22 at 11:30, we will have the flag raising ceremony right in front of Windmoc next to the US 158 Roundabout. We expect to have a military veterans presence along with that. We timed our town council agenda meeting to shift it a little later to allow the council and anyone who's here to be able to join us for that 11:30 event. If we haven't yet, we will reach out to our county officials as well. Would love to have members of our community, our county leadership. As we've said before, this flag project is in Bermuda Run, but it is a gateway to the county, and that's how we think of it. The flags that you'll see will be the US flag, the North Carolina flag, and the Davie County flag. There'll be a huge medallion in the center of the Flag Plaza that will represent the town of Bermuda Run. But we view this as a gateway and an entry point into our county and very proud to have that. I'll, I'll make a few remarks, but I'll say tonight that without the, the Vision Committee and the work of those volunteers and the pavers and the etch pavers and all the planning and work around that, this, too, would not have come to fruition. So another example of volunteerism, along with the public and private partnerships as well. So please, if you can, join us on Tuesday, April 22 at 11:30, rain or shine. On March 25, your town council had held its annual planning session. It's an all-day planning session. Doesn't get much more fun than that. We covered topics from 2024 accomplishments. We talked about the future vision of our town. Future vision meaning 10, 20 years from now. We talked about budget and various new and active projects that we have underway. So a very full day. And I think, I, I find those sessions extremely valuable in how we can come together, share ideas, talk about where we are, where we were, and where we're going. In next month's council meeting, we will not have a speaker. Instead, we'll focus a little bit more on some updates from that planning session. So specifically, I expect we'll talk about some 2024 accomplishments. We may touch a little bit on some of our vision discussion. And we'll talk also about our comprehensive plan, strategies and objectives and the work that's been done over this past year. I feel very strongly that when you create a strategy, one of the things you have to do or should do is go back and revisit, how are you doing with that strategy? What are the tasks you're accomplishing? What has changed? That helps you know what that path is that you're on and what, what factors have influenced changes to that. So I encourage you to join us next month. We'll talk about those updates as well. With that, I'll turn it over to counsel for any closing comments.
I, I got a question. It may be a question, it may not. But when the flag ceremony happens, after that, I'm only asking this because I know how we do at our church, who is going to be responsible for managing the flag like at half-mast when there's federal events and other events that go on? Because there's a lot of them, and I didn't realize till I see our flag at church go up and go down. And, I mean, that would be almost impossible for you to maintain. But could you find a military guy who would be willing, retired, to do it?
Yeah. So one of our partners here in the community, Wayne Thomas at Windmoc, has graciously volunteered to assist in that.
That's great.
Yeah. So likely his staff will, will take care of that. So it's a great entry into the county. It's a great backdrop to have Windmoc behind it. And thank you again to Wayne Thomas for agreeing to take care of that. So to your, to your question, Mike, it, it'll be covered. As part of any, any changes in the flag will be done through the Windmoc.
That's good.
Which is, which is great.
That's great.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, the council may be aware, but we, the planning board was mentioned. I wanted to make sure everyone knew that the chair of the planning board, Leah Joyce, lost her father day before yesterday. I want to make sure, and there, there will be services later this week. I just want to make sure everybody knew.
Thank you, Rod.
I just want to say, I thought it was a great program tonight. I loved hearing about senior services and everything they do. And with the, with the small staff, the magnitude of the programs and, and the magnitude of the people that they affect across the county, it's just, it's just really remarkable.
It is.
Good program.
Very good.
That's another statement. That's very true. And I don't think any of us, well, you would because you're their advisor as well, but I don't think a lot of us have any idea with the amount of programs they do.
Yeah, thumb, thumb through the, the booklet. You'll be, you'll be amazed at, at everything that's happening there. And again, one, one more time, participate, volunteer or both. So you, you have the challenge in front of you now, so.
You can bet I'll leave one of those booklets because I've got a neighbor who I've been trying to convince her. She needs to learn how to use a computer, computer even her age, so I wouldn't have to print her plane tickets.
There you go.
I mean, you can't teach her there, Mr. Hurst?
No, I, I print them now for her. But yes, but no, not at the level they do.
Motion for.
You would like to, would you like to make a motion?
Can I make a motion?
You would love to make a motion.
Volunteer Mike.
A motion by Mr. Tetter.
Yep.
To adjourn.